Good morning. I am Eden Wimfeymer and today is Tuesday, October 29th. Time is 9:00 AM. Someone is not on mute. I'm joined by Selectman Steve Hall and Selectperson Amanda Thompson. And I call this special Board of Select meeting to order. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. We have a lot of people on Zoom right now. We can start allowing public comment. Just raise your hand and Nicole will let you speak.
Eden, before we have the public comment, do you just want to give a structure of the land sales, how the meetings will go? Because I think that'll curb a lot of discussion if you just explain the process of that.
Yes, I was going to when we got to it on the agenda, but if people don't want to wait for that, I can talk about it.
Public comment at the end as well after the town land sales?
Yeah, we can wait for if we just have a motion to maybe to remove the public comment from number two, and then we could have public comment at the end. How about that?
I don't want to make the motion. I want people to be able to talk before we talk about land sales or make any voting, just so they feel comfortable with what we're doing. So we can have everyone talk about it. I just think you could curb it by explaining.
Okay, so what we're doing for the town land sales agenda item is accepting the offers we received on the three properties which were for sale for several weeks on our town website. So we're only accepting the offers we received, which were one per property. And after today's meeting, we will be having a public hearing to hear from the public regarding the land sales. There'll be public hearing signs posted on each property. The public hearing will be before our regularly scheduled Board of Select meeting on November 13th. So the public hearing will be at 5:30 at the town hall on November 13th at 5:30. And then the town will have an opportunity to vote on the land sales. And the town vote will be at the town meeting on November 19th at 7:00 PM at the Senior Community Center. So this is the process the town has to follow to in order to sell any town owned land. And this is the after having the land for sale, accepting the offers. Today is the next step by the Board of Selectmen, accepting the offers.
So just to clarify, when you say we're accepting the offers today, what you're saying is we're kind of
acknowledging.
Acknowledging them, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Had there been more than one offer per property, it would probably go a little bit differently. We'd have to, we'd have to vote on them. I actually don't know how it would have gone. I would have had to confer with the town attorney more, but, but since we only received one, he recommended just acknowledging them and accepting them at this meeting.
Do you have one question? From an Anne Cuttino?
Sure.
Good morning. First Selectman Wimpher and, and others. My name is Anne Cuttino and I'm an attorney with Halloran and Sage. And I represent Brignoley Enterprises. And I am here to speak about the offer that Brignoley Enterprises made for the sale of 205 Turkey Hills Road, which is and has served as the town landfill. I'm gratified to hear this morning about the process that you're going to engage in for the properties. As, as obviously Brignoley Enterprises is quite interested in acquiring the property and certainly looks forward to working with the town attorney, who I've already been in contact with on a very preliminary basis. As you know, this property is contiguous to the Brignoley Vineyard. It's a well-known vineyard in town and it will ultimately be brought into the farm. We had off made an offer as well as a proposed purchase and sales agreement. I do want to make a couple of comments because historic landfills are very difficult to sell because of the continuing groundwater and leachate monitoring that is required. The town's already doing that, is obligated to do this work and bear this cost. Upon the sale, Brignoley is intent on taking that responsible responsibility over from the town. Similarly, continuous maintenance of the cap. The town is currently performing that. Brignoley will be taking it over. Will be posting a bond and engaged in the maintenance of any other financial assurance requirements. So acquisition of a landfill comes with certain obligations that will be on the any future owner and Brignoley Enterprises is, is willing to do that and take the liabilities away from the town. And I think that's very significant that you wouldn't have any continuing obligation and liability to perform these activities for the towns. As well as it's challenging to sell landfills, not because of these ongoing maintenances, but because of this issue of liability for under federal and state laws. There's also limited redevelopment options. I think that's where Brignoley is perfectly well situated as again, the land is owned adjacent to it and used by Brignoley Vineyards. And this property again will be ultimately folded in to his property. The ownership in addition will produce income to the town, which it currently is not. It's a drain on town resources. His offer is above the appraised value, currently provides no taxes. And once it will be taxed, it, uh, once he owns the property, it will be subject to taxation. Albeit since it will be part of the farm, it would be subject to taxation as farmland. I think our proposal for the purchase speaks for itself. Again, it, it, it contains many standard terms and conditions. And I do look forward to working with the town attorney, Scott Langenfelder on, you know, finalizing a purchase and sale agreement and hopefully getting the approvals from the town and moving forward on behalf of Brignoley Enterprises. I wanted to introduce myself to you all at this point and thank you.
Thank you. It's just so hard. And it's like, I know we need housing and stuff, but. Nicole? Um.
I do not see any more hands.
I see your hand raised if you want to speak. You just have to unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Gail Reiner. First of all, I'm a little confused. I thought comments were supposed to be short. That was quite lengthy. Could you comment on that?
I think what she had to say was important. If something has to take a little bit longer, I will allow it. So.
Okay, well, I'm curious about when these properties were put up for sale and how they were advertised, where they were advertised. I didn't hear about it until the very end here. I also think, once again, for any of you who were at the July 5th meeting, which was also held at a time when most people are unavailable to be there. This also looks really bad. Having a meeting at 9:00 AM on a Zoom on a Tuesday morning. I contacted a number of people who are very concerned about these sales of property, as am I, considering that the benefit to the town is so little in terms of monetary or the taking over of the control of the maintenance of the old landfill. You know, that leaves questions of, are they going to be filing papers to show that they have been actually doing that? Will we actually know what's happening with that property as it is in real time? That's an aside, but getting back to the ops of this. It looks really bad, number one, having it at this time. Number two, Eden, you are a Wimfeymer. And I think there's a very clear conflict of interest with you being involved at all in the sale of property owned by the town to your family. I don't know the inheritance plans within your family, but I do know your family's very close. Your lovely family member, Mary, was one of our top babysitters for years. But so I know of your family well, as does everyone in town. I also have noticed that until now, the Wimfeymers have not been involved in town politics. But now that you are, you have a very strong conflict of interest here in the sale of this property to your family. I'd like to hear your comment on that, please.
Sure. Thank you for bringing it up. I'll touch on each of your points. So the, the properties, the three particular properties that we're working with today were announced at my September 25th meeting, our Board of Selectmen meeting. They were posted for sale for almost three weeks on the town website, which is the proper way to sell town property. I see someone shaking their head, but it's true. September 28th to October 16th, they were posted. The information is still online. You can see how it was posted and advertised. The reality is everything is always for sale. You just need to ask. So we had the first interest for property for the property on Spoonville Road. What I was approached approximately a year and a half ago by a resident. Then just talking, you know, with my family, with my husband. I told him about this property. We know the homeowner and he, he mentioned the property, the land on Holcomb Street, that one acre unbuildable property, which is adjacent to the Wimfeymer Farm, which I'm not an owner of. It's an LLC I'm not part of. Was offered to my father-in-law years and years ago. And at the time, he did not have the money to purchase it. The town wanted to sell it to him. There's a brook on it. The, um, there's lots of reasons we'll get into more later. I'm sure there'll be more questions, but the town is very willing to not have to maintain this property in the brook any longer, which is why the opportunity presented itself. We were selling other land. I had other interests from residents. That interest fizzled, happened to fizzle out. I did reach out to our Public Works Department, since they maintain all the prop town owned property and land. I reached out to, and I did talk about this at the September meeting. I reached out to employees who've been in town hall for 40 years, asked them over the course of the last year, is there any other property that, that the town would want to sell? Because I would include it. This is obviously a big deal. I'd include it in the whole process. And there just happened to be no other except for these properties. So that's how we got to the Wimfeymers' purchase. And the landfill, that was also presented to me as an interest. And I just want to clarify this meeting time. There's no, we're not selling the land today. The reason I had this 9:00 AM meeting is there's lots of reasons why. One, I had a regularly scheduled meeting last week. I was out of the country all week. I have a Board of Finance meeting tonight. We have some capital requests that are urgent. I have to present them to the Board of Selectmen prior to the Board of Finance meeting, which is really the main reason of this meeting. I added on the land sale acceptance. I could have had it prior to the Board of Selectmen meeting next week, prior to the public hearing, which was at 5:30, but that meeting would have been at 5:00, which people have a hard time attending 5:30. So five would have been harder. My Board of Selectmen member couldn't make it any earlier than 5:30. We actually have 45 people online right now, which I think is the most we've ever had of Board of Selectmen meeting. So that's the reason why I have a day full of activities with our resident trooper, doctor appointments and everything. And this is the best time I did it. I didn't do it for any nefarious reasons. It was convenience and there's more to the land sales. There's the public hearing and there's the town meeting, which you all have an opportunity to vote on it. I hope that helps answer your questions. Nicole, do you see any others?
I do not. If anyone has a question, please go to the three dots next to your name and click raise hand.
Yeah, I have Jason Hayes and Jennifer Frank, who would each like to talk, it looks like.
Whoever want, Jason, I think you're muted. If you want to unmute.
Sure. So first of all, I have a couple of concerns I'd like to raise rather quickly. I, looking at the Holcomb lot, I, I don't see, and I was talking with some other people and with Amanda as well. I don't have issue with the land being sold to the Wimfeymers. I have issue with the transparency and the way this was handled. And I would also like to elaborate a bit more because I have all three bids. So there's a lovely letter from them, but I would also think that Eden, you should clarify a bit more that you are not part of the LLC, but the LLC is three people. Your husband and his two siblings. So the, the funds were coming directly, one third of that funding is coming through you. So that is a direct sale to Eden Wimfeymer. First.
The Wimfeymer Farms is a, an LLC with its own money.
It's, it's a living land trust. So that is, that is one third owned by your husband. So that is your property. That is you. Okay, so let's clarify that. But, but I also do want to say in defense of Eden, that I think the land would, I don't have an issue with that being absorbed by the farm. So I, I, that I don't have, take issue with. I take issue to the process. The other thing I want to clarify is selling town property is according to state statute, you need to advertise for at least two days and you need to put signs on the property that it is for sale unless it is a foreclosure property. I have sent those statutes over to town hall. I'd be more than happy to share those with you as well. And I have a call into the state. So it was not handled properly. So posting it on a town website as a single line tick item that says town land sales that no one sees in purple in a list of 10 other items is not how you legally sell. If, if the main goal of this selling of our land, which is a town asset, was to raise funds, to bring capital in, that's a double process. One, due diligence on sales to raise the most amount of funds. The second should be taxable income. That's what we're looking for. What is the tax benefit for selling this land? The Board of Select failed on both accounts because you did not advertise properly to get more than one bid, except for the people who you knew wanted the land. One being your family, one being Brigno. Now let's talk about the dump. I have Brigno's bid. It's 17 pages and Anne Cuttino, I beg to differ. There are a lot of clauses in there that are not just typical standard normal because a lot of those clauses leave the town liable, 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 liable. It says the town will resume, will hold, the town is responsible. There's a lot of that. This is not buying of a landfill contaminated land as is. If Brigno wants that land, he buys it as is. The town is not going to absorb any liability. And with Brigno being the number one most litigious person in our town, how many times has Brigno sued the town of East Granby, Eden? Do you know?
I don't, off the top of my head.
You, would you say it's more than six, more than eight, more than 10?
No, I just know about one big one that.
No, 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 no. No, I'm talking for the benefit of, for his own benefit, not representing. That is the problem. I don't think we should be selling contaminated land with serious liabilities to the most litigious person in our town. That raises serious concerns. Why open the town up to massive liability when we don't need to? Also, how will that land be accessed? Because you had Justin McKenna from Geometric Survey Projects from the company VHB out of Springfield. I asked you about this. They did a full survey of the dump land and all land around it. They pulled all, they most certainly did. I have photos, if you'd like to see the meeting of them surveying our land. So they also pulled.
They surveyed the road to the RCC was my understanding.
And they also went and pulled all of the town permits, as well as all the town plans and schematics for all land that borders, the bike trail, the walking path, and anything on the back of that land and anything that borders Brigno. So I, my question to you was, when we take the cost of the surveys, because the town has due diligence to survey this land before we sell it, because what we're doing is we're splitting two town lots. The dump and Spoonville is what you're looking to do. You need, the town has to survey those lands. What are the costs of the surveyor? Now you're also looking to sell the landfill, which is considered contaminated or land that cannot be disturbed at a certain level that must be monitored. So you cannot in good faith, as our first select woman, sell this land to Brigno without an environmental lawyer signing off on this deal to protect the town's liability. What are those costs? What are our closing costs? What are our lawyers, the legal fees? Now minus that from the 62,500 from the three joint sales, and our town is looking close to nothing in benefit. And the numbers you also sent over, I'd love to grab those. If I may continue Eden, I've gone past my two moments. Is that all right? It's great. Great. So you sent over the numbers for the tax that would be generated. I believe the dump you said was 19,000. That figure would not be just from the dump. That would be for his entire property, not just 19,000 in taxes for the dump.
It would be for the landfill.
Yeah, that, that's not what the paperwork shows. And then the other number you gave was 2,000, I believe, some odd change for the 14,000 square foot piece of split land off the back of Spoonville, which is not accurate. Those people are not going to be paying another $25, $2700 a year. And that would be their combined tax bill. So you need to figure out what that total would actually be. So the benefit would only be a matter of a couple of hundred dollars. And the generated tax income from selling town land to your family on Holcomb would only be a grand total of $911 and change per year. It's not worth giving away our assets at a loss. That's my concern. So I, and I also, my other concern is when you look at the Spoonville lot, if you split that lot, what you're doing is the front lot that owns, that currently sits the original schoolhouse, the thrift store. When you sell off the back half of that for 5,000, some odd, what's it, $7,000? $5,000, when you sell that off, you now make the front lot unsellable because it's unbuildable. So God forbid, something should happen to the original schoolhouse. The town now owns dead, unbuildable land that we cannot sell. God forbid, in the future, we need to raise revenue. We have an untenable lot that we now own. That's my concern. So the dump, we have, we're legally obligated with those fees. It is what it is. Welcome to the world of trying to be eco-friendly. The Spoonville, the land you're selling, costs the town nothing to maintain because we don't mow it. It's a hill, it's all trees. So we have no incurred costs there. We mow what, two or three times a year on the Holcomb lot, which could be left to be because it is a brook. And how much did we spend last year, Eden, to trench and stone that lot? It was over $30,000 of town money and now we're going to sell it for $5,000. I think that's foolish. We are, we're into that land on Holcomb for tens of thousands of dollars of town taxpayer money. And now we're going to sell it for 5,000 to get $911 a year. So that's how I feel about those issues, Eden. And those are some serious concerns that I think the folks really need to, to be aware of moving forward with these land sales. I think that if the town, if the Board of Select was serious about looking to raise revenue for the town, then this should have been a serious process of trying to sell these. These should have been advertised publicly as a state requires at least a two-day minimum. The, the, those sales should have been posted in newspaper. It actually even tells you the circulation numbers. That was not done. A line item on the town website, when people can't even find the link to go to a 9:00 AM Board, uh, Board of Select meeting Zoom, is not how we sell town land if the real true purpose is to raise funds. I'd like to hear your thoughts, please. Thank you for letting me go past the two minutes.
Sure. So first of all, the town is not in the money-making business. We're not looking to make money from residents. To me, I look at, if you came to me and asked to buy something, when any resident comes to me, I work hard to try to get something done. This is all I'm doing. Second, I defer to my town attorney on all, how, how the process. So, okay, I understand you don't agree with it. And I will obviously check with him. So. Third, I just made some notes. I, I, to, to talk about the landfill, let's start with that. So the offer we received from Brigno Enterprises is just that. It's an offer. It's not an agreement. We didn't agree, we didn't sign his purchase contract. It's not a purchase contract. It's an offer. So that will have to be, I mean, our own attorney came up with our own. It's not executed, so I'm not sharing it. But we're obviously not going to agree to everything in the offer.
But that would have to be an environmental lawyer who looks at that is my point. And you, you wouldn't respond to that.
It's right. It really needs to be. In, we can agree to disagree, but it needs to be an attorney who is familiar with selling real estate, municipal real estate, commercial real estate, because all, what's important is what's in the contract. So when, and the attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is there's, and then we would be asking for an environmental study to be done. The property, like you said, would be sold as is, where is. It's called a due diligence period in any real estate purchase agreement. If there's, if there's inspections to be done. In this case, it would be a phase one environmental study. So the study would be done prior to any conveyance of the land. The study would be done. We would know where we're at. We would know what, if there's any, we do, for people who aren't aware, we monitor it throughout the year. We spend about $10,000 a year to monitor it. We would know where we are at, at the point in time of conveyance. So any problems in the future would rest on the purchaser. If, if there was a problem that was ongoing now and, or it was being monitored now and became an issue five years from now, it would be at the town's responsibility. But this phase one environmental study is what's done in this type of scenario to know where we're at.
Who pays for the environmental study, Eden?
The buyer.
So Brigno would be responsible for that as well as the surveying? That's what you wrote to me in the letter. That's correct?
Correct. Town's not for any surveying.
And you don't, so the town is not responsible for any surveying costs for splitting a piece of town property? So that would all rest on the buyer to tell us where the lines are?
Correct, as in any purchase. Yep.
Okay. And so the other question still is, you don't feel, you just think you need a regular real estate attorney to sell contaminated landfill land? We don't need an environmental lawyer? That's your stance? That's what you're stating here in front of everyone?
I'm deferring to my town attorney. I'm not an attorney.
But, but, but that's what your attorney has told you. That's what you're saying. No, what's important is that the town's liabilities are protected. And you're telling me, we don't need to incur the cost of an environmental lawyer to sell contaminated land. That's my concern. That's everyone's concern.
If we do need to, we will.
Have you looked up into state statute? Have you looked into guidelines?
We don't have a purchase agreement yet. So the purchase.
Eden, I have a 17-page document from Brigno with a line for your signature on the bottom. His is already signed with a line for your signature.
It's his offer. We don't sign offers.
Exactly, but, but.
Hundreds or thousands of purchase agreements. We don't just sign an offer.
Exactly. But what I'm saying is you're not being very clear with folks.
Okay. Well, okay. The purpose of this meeting, the purpose of the public hearing, the purpose of the town meeting is to negotiate a contract. We're accepting feedback. That's what the public hearings for. The vote at town meeting is feedback. So nothing is set, we're not signing anything without town approval.
But there's a lot of information that folks are not getting is my point, Eden. That's the concern. That's why you're seeing this many people on here because there is no information.
Which is great. I want them to know where I'm coming from. I want them to know we're not signing anything. We're not selling, we're not selling a town property without a majority approval from people. So I'm not signing anything. I'm not signing any offer that comes in. I'm not signing the Wimfeymer Farms LLC offer. I'm not, I'm being, the whole purpose, I, I mean, the reality is, I could have just had a public hearing in a town meeting. I don't need to do all this. I'm doing it for the sake of transparency.
That's not true.
Everyone, there's a few people shaking your heads, but if you don't want to believe what I'm saying, you don't have to believe what I'm saying. But I'm telling you, I'm not in it for the wrong reason. The Wimfeymer Farms property on Holcomb Street, it's not the end of the world if they don't buy it. I'm trying to do a service for residents. The resident on Pleasant View has asked me a year and a half ago. I feel like I did her disservice for dragging this out for a year and a half. I dragged it out for a year and a half to make sure I was doing the right thing. So if you have a problem with that, so be it. I'm trying to do the right thing, just like if you came to me and wanted to purchase the property, I would do the same exact thing for you. I'm treating everyone equal. So if you have a problem with it, I don't know what to say. I'm being as honest as possible. I see you raising your hand, Gail.
I would Jennifer Frank.
But if, are you okay if Jennifer asks a question, Gail? Okay.
Okay, Jennifer Frank, East Graham, Sepp Valley, New Drive. I'm a licensed civil engineer in the state of Connecticut. Briefly, I would just like to say I echo all of Gail and Jason's concerns. Not enough advertisement, not enough opportunity for bidding. Conflicts of interest clearly. And as far as contaminated land, um, I've remediated a lot of sites. It's very, it can turn into a big complicated thing. And a phase one study is going to recommend a phase two study. And those can be like anywhere fifty to a hundred thousand dollars where you document the boundaries of the contamination.
Right, that would be on the buyer again.
Okay, but a phase one is just not going to take care of everything.
Okay, so we'll.
I just feel it's a terrible thing to sell a contaminated site to a litigious person. Uh, even though I know he's a good business person in town, I don't feel this whole thing that you're doing is protecting the town's interests.
Okay.
And and of course, I'm being part of the land conservancy. I'm always in favor of preserving open space and this is hurting that cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else Nicole? I know Gail has her hand raised again. I just, um, for the, I mean, this will come up again at the public hearing. I appreciate when people reach out to me. I've gotten an FOI request. I've gotten walk-ins. I've gotten numerous emails, which I've responded to all of them. And I'm grateful to do that because I'd rather give people my truth and whether they agree with it or not, but but I wanted to go back to the costs and the benefit. Like I said, we're not in the money to make, we're not in the business to make money. We're a non, not for profit town. So if a circumstance comes up, I can help resident, great. If it doesn't work out, fine. But to go over the costs, we have offers of fifty thousand for the landfill, seventy five hundred for Holcombe Street, five thousand dollars for, I think I'm getting those right, five thousand for Spoon, the Spoonville property. The purchaser always pays for the surveying and their due diligence inspections and things. The town, the cost isn't going to come to the town. The attorney will do all three closings for the town side under forty five hundred dollars. The purchasers are responsible for their own closing costs and inspections and things. The taxes we're looking at, and I'll verify the taxes for Spoonville Road, but I was told based on that portion, our town planner broke out the fourteen thousand square feet. I was told that, I'm trying to find my sheet. That the taxes we would be collecting annually going forward would be twenty seven two thousand seven hundred and fifty three dollars for the Spoonville property, nineteen thousand two hundred and sixty dollars for the landfill and nine hundred and twelve dollars for the Holcombe Street property. Plus, um, the money we'd be saving is the maintenance fees of the landfill. We'd be saving, um, Public Works gave me what it costs to maintain the brook and I'm not aware of them spending that much money on the brook. I will follow up with them on that. I know that the the Wimfimer family used to used to, um, maintain that brook and where is across the street. It used to be a beautiful fishing pond. It's not anymore. So hopefully that'll improve in the future. So the cost for Public Works for maintenance for mowing is about another probably fifteen thousand dollars a year for for those two properties. So we will, we'll be looking at bringing in about twenty four thousand dollars a year plus saving about fifteen thousand dollars a year. So, um, it'll, it'll, it's about thirty something thousand dollars a year that we'd be looking at. Again, we're not, we're not desperate for thirty five thousand dollars a year. So that's not what, not pushing to have this money. I'm just saying it's not going to be a loss for the town to to do this, these transactions if they do go forward. Um, okay. Nicole, are there any others? I can't, I apologize. I can't see everyone.
I don't know what happened. Can you see that Steve Modra has his?
Oh, yeah. Okay, now I do. I just.
Hi there.
Steve, go ahead.
Thanks. Just a quick question. If the landfill area is sold, uh, where would the transfer station be? Is that impacted?
No, the landfill is a, is beyond the RCC. So it's, um, not impacted at all.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I don't see anyone else.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, so.
Um, I, I'm, I'm, I'd like to say something. This is Lisa Mendes.
Okay.
Can you hear me? My question is when I, when I look at the the plan for the landfill, it includes the little, it seems to include the little shed and the porch there. So can you like be clear about? But that's on, on the town's website that the picture and the information includes the shed and the porch, which is like the landfill we're using.
Yeah, it's, it's not. So again, it'll be surveyed properly. So it's just the, the acreage of the landfill and nothing from the RCC. But it's.
But do you see how that would be confusing to a potential buyer?
Well, honestly, we haven't had any.
Or even the.
So that was from G I, G I S maps are not a hundred percent accurate, obviously. So it will, that's the reason for.
Well, in in terms of a say, in terms.
Right.
In terms of a sale, it it should be.
Correct. Right. It won't close without a proper survey. And we're not going to sell anything from the RCC.
Okay, and I have another question. My second question is when you are are specifically referring to your lawyer, you do mean the town lawyer that's paid for by the town.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Is that it? Though we'll have public comment at the end also, if someone comes up with a question. Okay, so next on the agenda is the capital requests. So like I said, these will be presented to Board of Finance tonight and voted on at November nineteenth town meeting. So first capital requests we have is, as everyone is aware, I resurrected the Village Center study and from that we, um, that was started about twenty years ago. We, um, me and our town planner in the town, um, applied for grants. For anyone who's not aware, we did win a three and a half million dollar steep grant, small town economic grant to realign School Street and have it become part of our village center. It'll be designed to, um, run behind the, there's some things online, so you can look, um, run behind the liquor cabinet and come around near Cumberland Farms instead of dumping out as it does dangerously now onto Route twenty. There'll be sidewalks, pocket parks, light new lighting, um, benches. And so we won three and a half million dollars for that. So in the five year capital plan, which is our, the town saving plan, I put in a request for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for construction plans to be done. That's the only thing that's not covered with a three and a half million dollar grant. So, um, we do need funds to, um, pay a company to do the construction and design plans of the street. And the three and a half million would be for the actual work to be done. So we did put a request for proposal out with the planning department and we got three quotes in um, ranging from about a hundred and eighty five thousand to four hundred and twenty five thousand. So we did go with the lowest bid, which covers all of the town's needs. It's a hundred and eighty three thousand five hundred and twenty five dollars. And as I already mentioned, we have a hundred and fifty thousand in the capital plan. We do have some, um, other grant money for, um, lots at money and I'm, I'm not knowing what the acronym stands for right at the moment, but it's for, um, capital improvements. Typically, Public Works uses it for, um, for their, um, work in town. But, um, there is fifty three thousand dollars left over that we can use for that. And we also do have twenty five thousand of ARPA funds that were unused from, um, for the village center. So we do have money to cover the hundred and eighty five thousand, just so no one's concerned about that. So, um, one of the requests and will, the board will vote on them individually. So we have the hundred and fifty thousand for infrastructure planning, which is for the RFP that I mentioned. The second request we have is for five thousand dollars for, um, Gray Matter, which is our IT company. So anyone who's aware of, um, our public buildings manager, Ray Carlson, I think he's actually on the call. Ray is incredible. He works, um, does share services for the town and for the schools, but he's a town employee. He has, um, not good working conditions and space that he needs. So we've negotiated with the Granby Ambulance. They've been generous enough to let us use a, um, space in their, in the ambulance department in the ambulance building where Ray can work out of. We just need to outfit it. So we have a five thousand dollar request. We might, we probably won't use all of it. The quote is for four thousand three hundred and seventy four dollars for IT to set him up in there with wifi and, um, fax lines and things that he would need. The hardware and firewall and all that stuff. So that's one other request. That was the last minute request I sent over to Board of Finance yesterday. So we're really hoping that Ray can work in there. He has space to lay it plans out and things that, um, he has to do instead of working in the kitchen area of Public Works. And the third request, um, that we have is for fifty thousand dollars for our plan of conservation and development. And I'm actually requesting that from next year's, um, capital line, um, from twenty five, twenty six. Because our, the company we use for our town planning is our consultant is, um, able to do the plan of conservation and development for us. The plan of conservation and development for the town is due every ten years. And they're going to do, um, they've offered to do it to us for us for a fee of fifty thousand dollars. And I did talk about this at September's meeting, if people want more information, but typically a plan like this costs anywhere from seventy five to a hundred and something thousand. I think they quoted as something big, but because they already do work for us, they'll do it for fifty thousand dollars. This includes public input, which our plan that was done going on almost ten years ago, there was no public input. Put a lot of it was copy and paste and it wasn't, it wasn't thorough like it could be. So we're really looking forward to having one done properly and with, um, a lot of public input. And I have a quote, uh, or I have a contract, oh, it's a quote. And it has to get approved, um, through the, um, the portal, the board of selectmen voted on it, but it has to get approved, obviously now, um, through capital funds to pay for it. And, um, Robin, our planner, and Tyke, the group that she works for, will get started on it right away. So those are our three requests. So I'll just need motions from either Steve or Amanda to move forward. We can start with the, um, I see more questions, but we'll have questions at the end. Oh, I think you're muted, Steve.
Wait a minute. Audio isn't working.
Oh, it's not. Wait a minute. Nicole, can you unmute him?
I think he's unmuted. It's just not working.
I see mute.
Try pressing your spacebar on your computer.
Wait. Nicole. Do you want to call me? Do you want to call in Steve?
Well. Okay.
There's a call in number on the agenda. I saw him muted on my end.
Oh, yeah. Looks like he is now, but he wasn't before and it still wasn't working.
Okay.
I mean, I can make motions, but you're still gonna want his volume for the other ones, especially the land sales.
I don't know how to accept a call, so I'm, I'm just seeing if Nicole is here.
No, I still can't hear you, Steve. Does he want to just call your cell phone and you can put it on speaker so we can at least hear him?
Okay. He gave a thumbs up. I don't know what that means. I wonder if he signs out and then signs back in if it would work. I'll get him on, I'm calling in now.
Okay.
Got to love technology. Good morning. I don't know what's happening, but all right. Steve's on speakerphone now.
Yeah, I don't, uh, I don't know what happened with my mic and all of a sudden it stopped working.
Okay. Can you hear him, Amanda?
Yeah, I can. He's quiet, but I can hear him. Um, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the capital request for the town center plans.
I will second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, the motion carries for the hundred and fifty thousand dollar capital request, which still has to get approved at Board of Finance tonight.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the capital request for Gray Matter.
I second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. And.
I'll make a motion to approve the capital request for the plan of conservation and development with, um, Tyke. Is that right?
Yes. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, great. Thank you so much for that. Okay, Steve, I'll leave you on speaker. There's some feedback, so, um, we'll just have to deal with it. Okay, next on the agenda are ARPA requests. So we have, um, let's see, a request. We're basically just, um, the money, most, the money's been allocated. The money we received from the state has been allocated. Um, this was the COVID relief funds. Everything has to be, um, allocated and, um, there were some new rules that we need um, a certain amount of quotes for each item or unless it was a state bid. And now we're just kind of, um, crossing our Ts and dotting our. And now we're just kind of, um, crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. And I have a request from our treasurer and, from our treasurer and our assistant treasurer of what we have to do with some of the funds that were allocated already, and I'll just read it. This is from Kelly Jacobs, our town treasurer. I'm requesting a reallocation of funds from therapeutic services to the assistant treasurer salary line in the amount of five thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-one cents. The shortfall in the line was due to social security slash Medicare tax not being included in the original request. Just to note, no therapeutic services are being cut. There is an excess balance being returned from that line. And also requesting the Board of Selectmen restate the twelve thousand dollar, one hundred, twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars of ARPA funds approved for Town Hall duct cleaning on ten twenty-six, twenty-two should be for town buildings, not just for Town Hall. So I'll just need a motion to make those two corrections.
Sorry, I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Steve, are you still on?
I will second the motion.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of those two adjustments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and just so everybody knows, every, everything over five thousand dollars from the ARPA funds had to get approved by Board of Selectmen. So if there was any changes, um, like this, they have to get approved by the Board of Selectmen also. Okay, next on the agenda is the acceptance of the, or it's town land sales, which is the acceptance of the offers we received, which again are going to go to public hearing on November thirteenth at five thirty PM. And then to a town vote on November nineteenth at seven PM. So everyone can air their thoughts then. Um, and we'll have a public comment after. So let's start with, um, in no particular order. We, I'll see what's at the top of my list. Okay, I have the, um, the east, it's E slash S Holcombe Street. Matt Block, Matt Block, Matt Block Lot eleven dash twenty-one. So we received an offer for seventy-five hundred dollars. Um, for this property. The offer is, um, if it's accepted, would be to close on November fourteenth after the town meeting. It would be a cash offer. And, um, the purchaser is Wimfimer Farms LLC, which is Christian, who's my husband, and two of his siblings, Robert and Mary. Um, I do have the offers, if people want to see them, um. They wrote a letter, and the Holcombe Street people wrote a letter too, or excuse me, the Spoonville Road people wrote a letter also. And we did re- receive a written offer for the landfill. But again, it's not a contract. It's not signed by parties. So, um, can I have a motion for the Holcombe Street offer to be accepted?
Sure, uh, you were, you're going to recuse yourself on this one?
Yes, I'm going to recuse myself on this one.
Okay, um, I make a motion to accept the offer for the Holcombe property.
I will second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, thank you. Okay, onto the, um, the property, the Spoonville Road property. So just so everyone's clear, there's a, approximately a fourteen thousand square foot chunk of land behind, and I wanted to touch base with Jason's comment earlier. I forgot to, um, comment on it. Um, so it's the rear portion of the thrift shop's lot, which happens to abut a property on Pleasant View. Um, it's like, kind of like a triangular rear portion. It touches part of Old County Highway and this lot, particular lot on Pleasant View. The homeowners on Pleasant View reached out to the building department a couple of years ago and wanting to put a barn on their property. They have some, um, yard equipment, some recreation vehicles they wanted to store in the barn. They did not have enough road frontage for their property in order to put the barn in. So they came to me and said, is there any chance we can purchase this property? This is where it came from. They would need a portion of, they would need just some more square footage to be able to put the barn size in that they wanted. The barn that they want will still have to go through zoning. They would need to meet the proper regulations with the, with the building department in order to put up a barn. So it's not just approving them to have a barn. So they will pay for those permits, they'll pay for the surveying, they'll, they'll do all that before they close on the property. Um, so that's where the history of that was. Um, and I'll just very quickly answer Jason's question about the resale of the lot. So right now, the thrift shop is on a legal, non-conforming lot. So, um, there's actually a statute, um, I looked it up yesterday, I think it's seventy-three, one. Towns are not liable, towns do not have to follow proper zoning regulations, which is why the thrift shop is on a non-conforming lot. It only has seventy feet of road frontage. So the reality is, is if for some reason, and we discussed this, Amanda and I discussed it, if for some reason the, the thrift shop was moved somewhere else and we wanted to resell the lot and make some money on that, um, someone wouldn't be able to come in and build because it wouldn't meet regulations. It wouldn't meet regulations for road frontage. They, um, well, and Septic probably wouldn't pass through Farming Valley Health Department because they have their own regulations for residential buildings too. So the chances of it selling to a builder or to someone, you know, to make money, maybe the, the neighbors would want to buy it someday, the neighbors on Spoonville. But it wouldn't be so that they could build on it because it wouldn't be possible because of zoning regulations. So anyways, that was just a quick aside. Um, so Cassandra and Kevin Rosansky, who live at ten Pleasant View Drive, are offering five thousand dollars for this piece of property. And they also would be paying cash, and it would be, the closing would be upon acceptance from the town meeting. And of course, um, proper surveys being done. So I will just look for a motion for that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the offer for the Spoonville Road property.
I'll second the motion.
Um, I'll just also make a comment about the way the property is laid out. If anyone, if you go there and look at it, besides the fact that it's too narrow, when you get to the back of the thrift shop, it's a huge uphill. So it really does make the most sense for, um, the, the people who are wanting to buy it as far as use. Um, because it is up high near their property. Uh, you couldn't, even if you could fit a house on that thrift store lot, you couldn't fit a well or a septic on there because of, um, just the topography of it.
Right. Thank you. Okay, um, all those in favor, did I, we need to vote, yeah, say aye. All right, aye. All right, thank you. So that, that offer's been accepted, which will again go to public hearing and town meeting for a vote. Okay, next is the landfill. And we've talked about this one already. So we have an offer for fifty thousand dollars, um, for the landfill. The, um, as we discussed, this, um, the environmental studies will be done, phase one, phase two if necessary. Um, and no contract will be signed, of course, until both parties are satisfied with, uh, um, agreement. So, um, I'll need a motion, then we can have discussion as a board, if you'd like.
I'll make a motion to purchase sale of landfill semester.
I'll make a second motion if you're not, Amanda, I can't tell if you're.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. Um, do you have discussion?
Um, yes, so, um, I, I didn't really want to make the motion or to second it just because I don't think we should be selling this land. Um, Tim Bregnel's attorney or Bregnel LLC's attorney talked a little bit about, um, how they would take over liability. And, uh, what she's talking about is the liability of maintaining the testing. But that's not the liability we're worried about. The liability we're worried about is the contamination. Um, it's hard to sell it, not because of the maintenance. The issue is the safety of it long term. So the goal is to have no one touching it, um, in order to hope that the contamination doesn't happen again. So, um, I, I mean, I've talked with several attorneys. I also think that we should have an environmental attorney look at this. Um, again, the issue isn't what's written up in the contract. The, the fact is that when DEP looks at this in order to do remediation, they are going to come back on the contaminator, and that's just how it works. So it doesn't matter what you write up in that, or what we write up in that contract as a town, it will come back to us. Um, and that's just a fact. Uh, I'm happy to talk to DEP, um, and get examples of that. So the town can see that that is truly the fact, not just something I'm saying. Um, my initial take on this was, yes, please have someone take it. And I was, um, excited about somebody having it and if we could have an airtight policy. Um, but after talking to, um, people in insurance, uh, talking to attorneys, talking to people who work for DEP, um, you know, everyone has said, it's just, you're just asking for something to happen sooner rather than later. Um, and if it's out of our hands, it still can come back at us. So I think the goal is to just leave it be. Regardless of cost. I mean, again, it's not, it's, it's, it's not saving us money by keeping it, certainly. Um, but it is a safety factor, and I certainly care about having clean groundwater for our townspeople more than I care about money. Sorry if anyone disagrees with that.
Thanks, Amanda. Wait, hang on one second. Hold on. Okay, go ahead.
Um, for some reason, my microphone is on, wire on me, but i- if it can be pleaded and remove the liability from the town by selling as a landfill, I think that is a victory. Um, it's like your first thoughts, Amanda, the, the fact that we could get rid of the liability associated with a landfill and the possibility of contaminating groundwater going forward. Um, if, if, if that can be alleviated or taken away from the town completely, I would be more than happy to get rid of the landfill.
Uh, I would too, if that's true, Steve, but it's just not true. I mean, I, I, as far as I've been told over and over again by multiple attorneys, is that there's no such thing as an airtight policy. You can't. It comes back on whoever made the mess. So somebody who owns it now, they may go after that person who owns it currently until they run out of money essentially, or they come back at the town because we were the contaminator, and that's just what happens. So, um, I mean, it, it is what it is. And, uh, the, the phase one is really just not even pertinent to what we're discussing. I mean, you're talking about what does it look like right now, and the issue is not what does it look like right now? We do get attested every six months, and it's not, um, you know, being disrupted at all. Uh, a phase one has nothing to do with this conversation.
Um, I did, just so everyone knows too, the town's attorney will be at the, um, town meeting. He, just so you know, obviously I concur with Amanda. I don't want to be responsible, obviously, for anything in the future. The guarantee I have from the attorney is after we sell the properties, the town will be absolved of all responsibility for it. If there's a leak in the future, the owner will be responsible, not the town. So if he he's the attorney, I'm not.
Right, but he's not an environmental attorney, and he doesn't have experience in this area. That's why you get an environmental attorney. So I, I think that's what I asked in the past and what I'm asking again.
Yeah, no, and, okay, I, I, thank you for that. Environmental attorneys don't sell properties, though. So they're, they're environmental attorneys. So whether he's deferring to one or not, he'll, I'll, I'll ask him again.
Yeah, they're just gonna give you the context of what has previously happened, or, you know, kind of the culture of Connecticut. And if that can come back, which it can, I can tell you that. And so, I mean, whether you have a, an environmental attorney there or not, I'm, I'm going to give you a list of, of times when that has happened. So you understand it. So you can believe me or not believe me.
I believe you. I appreciate, see Melissa, I appreciate you reaching out to them, so. Um, uh, the more information, the better. Um, okay, so the Board of Selectmen's up for discussion. I see a hand that we can talk about. We'll have public comment right after the vote takes that. Um, all right, can, so I'll ask for, um, all those in favor, say aye, of accepting the offer, not agreeing to a contract. Say aye. I see your hand raised. Okay. Okay, um, Steve's an aye, I'm an aye. Amanda?
Uh, I'm a nay. I don't want to accept an offer at all for this property because I don't think we should sell it.
Okay. All right, well, with two yeses, the motion carries. And we will reconvene at the, at the public hearing. So ne- the next, um, item on the agenda, number six, is public comment. So I see a hand already, a couple of hands. Nicole, do you want to unmute someone? I don't think I can do it on my end.
Aye, it's Gail Reiner again. Um, I just want to make another comment, Eden. I appreciate your attempt at doing what's best for the town. But in listening to what I've heard this morning, um, I don't think you're doing that, um, in this case of these properties. You mentioned that the town is not interested in making money, that we're a nonprofit town. But then you mentioned that the property, uh, where the, um, thrift shop is, couldn't make any money for the town because it wouldn't be big enough to attract, uh, somebody, a builder.
So, I was only responding, I was responding to Jason's question about the resale value of it.
Well, I, I'm still saying that it is your responsibility to keep our town afloat. And one of the biggest ways you do that is by making sure that all taxes are paid and that the tax on property sold makes sense in terms of any risk uh, to the town. And I do not think selling, uh, first of all, him offering fifty, how much property is the landfill? I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Um, it's, I want to say um, I have it here, apologize. Thirty-nine acres.
Okay, thirty-nine acres for fifty thousand dollars to someone we know is litigious. Someone, the town residents who have paid attention to him in the past are aware that he has won arounds, going around the law to get what he wanted.
I'm not sure about that. The appraised value of it was thirty.
I think the town has a big problem with this person. Um, and his reputation, as you hear, is very well known. And selling this kind of property to people who are telling you lies and you are relying on your lawyer, who is not fit to judge this question, not being an environmental lawyer. Um, I want to make a request that at that town meeting, uh, we not only have the town lawyer, but we have a representative from DEP. And we have a, an, an environmental lawyer that you have retained at that meeting.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Is there anyone else? Jason, I see your hand. Do you want to un, just unmute yourself?
Yeah, so I have a, a few questions that I would like to raise in regards to the dump property. So, uh, is anyone else finding it a little bizarre that, that someone who's looking to buy contaminated landfill is looking to roll this, as Ann Coutino said, into his farm land, his vineyard? You can't grow anything on it, and the moment you start to disturb that land, that's when you run the risk of contaminating the water that the people in your town drink. This is a very serious concern, and I think by moving forward to bre- even a, a, approve this purchase offer, I think Eden and Steve, you have both failed the taxpayers of East Granby. I think this is a serious concern. I think this is a serious concern. Obviously, he's not going to be able to farm this land, but we lose the capability of controlling the fact that it remains undisturbed. And that is what keeps the residents of East Granby safe. And I think you've made a huge mistake with this vote this morning and I'm extremely disappointed and I hope that the the residents of East Granby are paying attention, that this is a serious, serious concern.
I agree you are not protecting our town in this matter and in this motion and you make it so quickly before you even have spoken to anyone from DEP. I think that shows gross ignorance on your part. Sorry to say that, but I feel that you have really failed us. I think your next phone call after this Zoom meeting should be to someone at DEP yourself to discover what is true and what is not true.
Please don't yell. No, you don't need to yell.
This, you know, if something happens with this.
I see John. Hi.
Hi, I just have a brief comment.
Okay.
Um. The issue here, one issue here, I think Amanda hinted at it, is the whoever, whatever lawyers you consult will need to do a lot of due diligence about the actual law, environmental law, because you may sign an agreement that says you don't have any responsibility for what happens later on. The law may supersede any such contracts, so you may find out the hard way some years down the road that, oh, that contract does not protect you at all. Um, that's where you need to look into the law. It's all.
Thanks, John. Oops. Okay. All right, um, I don't see any other hands up, so thank you everyone. I will just now
Jennifer Frank has a hand raised.
Oh, okay, sorry, I can't see it. Go ahead, Jennifer, you just have to unmute.
Uh, thank you. This is on another topic and maybe it's too late. As far as picking the lowest price design firm for the town center planning, were they vetted? Are they competent?
Yes.
It's, you sure?
They've done a lot of projects, they've done a lot of projects like this one, um. They, they did, um, we, one of the biggest concerns was the culvert redesign on, um, on School Street and it was covered in their costs where a couple of the other ones it wasn't, so, so Robin did vet them, yes.
Because the low, low bidder often misses things and you don't get
Yeah, that's what we were concerned about, but yeah.
Thank you.
We were really comfortable with it and they've done a lot of bigger towns that we're really kind of grateful for that quote.
Thank you.
Yep. And as always, my phone is always open. I'm, I'm open to conversation. If, um, if you have questions or concerns, obviously just reach out to me. And I will um, do whatever I can to, to help, so. All right, um, can I just have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we are adjourned at ten nineteen, my time, um, AM. Thank you.